All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the November 11th, 2024 School Board Meeting to order. The Holman Board of Education and the School District of Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk, Sauk and Fox and Dakota peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Also, on this Veterans Day, we honor the courage and sacrifice of our nation's veterans who have served selflessly to protect our freedoms. We express our deepest gratitude for their service and the lasting impact they have made on our community. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the role?
Bridgette Todd Robbins.
Excuse me.
Barb Wunsch.
Here.
Kieven Zilke.
Here.
Kadeja Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Need.
Here.
And Maggie Smith, here.
All right, with six other seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Kadeja has seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. We do not have any public participation this evening. All right, moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I have two recognitions tonight. First is it will be American Education Week, the week of November 18th. And this was first introduced in December of 1921 by the National Education Association and American Legion. This designated November week presents all Americans with an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. In the School District of Holman, we use this opportunity to not only celebrate our teachers, but all of our staff and all that they contribute to the ongoing success of our students and our school community. So we just want to thank them for all they do. And then secondly, it's, this week is National School Psychologist Week. So if you see any of our school psychologists, please tell them thank you for all that they do. This year's theme is Spark Discovery. In the School District of Holman, we recognize Bobby Joe Loomis, Cory Mueller, Laura Pernstiner, well, and, well, for the work she has done, Lisa Hesch, Nikki Kalander, and Nicole Osgood. So thank you for all they do for our students and how they help in collaborating with our staff. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion, item 8.1, I invite Rob Demuse from School Perceptions to present the results of the community survey. This item is for report only.
Hi, Rob, we're on with you now. If you're able to present your screens and slides, we'll be able to hear you.
All right, so just so I know, we're going through my screen. Do you see my screen that I just shared? Great. So my name is Rob Demuse. I'm here to present your survey results for your survey that just wrapped up a couple of weeks ago. We want to begin with a little bit about what you're going to look at here in terms of the color codes. We will spend little to no time on your blue slides. That's the background information. So whether it's a little bit about us, whether it's the actual text of what was in your survey, all of that is in here, but no, that is new. So we're not going to spend hardly any time on the blue. Instead, we'll begin quite quickly with your demographics. Those are on the yellow slides. Who took your survey? Where do they live? How old are they? And so on. We'll spend the most time on green, the results and the analysis, and certainly at the end I'll leave time for wrap-up questions. I know this isn't the first time that you've worked with us, but for the sake of repetition, we are School Perceptions. I'm the Vice President of Research at School Perceptions, and our mission in our 23rd year of business now, I guess, has never changed. It's to help educational leaders such as yourselves do three things, which is gather, organize, and use data to help make strategic decisions. And this is our first role as a leader. We've conducted over 3 million staff, hair, students, and community surveys, all in the name of school improvement, and we've helped more than 1,000 school districts navigate the strategic planning and referendum planning processes, just as you are tonight, and the weeks ahead, and the months ahead. So the good stuff, the stuff about you. Your survey wrapped up a couple of weeks back, October 21st, to be specific, and you blew it out of the water in terms of your respondents. It was a great turnout. In fact, you darn near doubled where you were before. When we did your survey in 2022, you had 1,461 respondents. This time around, you had north of 2,500. So whatever you did to get the word out really helps. It was also a four-page survey as opposed to an eight-page facility survey, which helps a lot, too, but your response rate is outstanding. Just under 30% of your folks took the survey. And just for context here, a normal response rate is the mid to upper teens. You almost doubled that as well. So you've got really good reliable data here, and the benefit of living in kind of a mid-sized community, especially for Wisconsin, is your margin of error that gets tighter and tighter. So rounding that ballpark, you're looking at about a plus or minus 2% statistical margin of error. So all good news so far. We then asked, what is your age? The other reason I feel confident in your data is the very top bar you, so for 65-plus, you're senior citizens, 28% of your survey respondents were in that bucket. 15.1% of the School District of Holman community is in that bucket. So you're overrepresented, which you're 65-plus here, and that's good because you're not going to have equal proportions of each of these groups in the ballot box. Your 65-plus will also be overrepresented at the polls. They will be there. They're very loyal voters. And of these groups here, they're most likely to be on a fixed income. So we really want to know how 65-plus are feeling about your potential plans. And you got it. You did a great job of reaching out to that group. We're getting the word out there. Other than that, this chart does and should look like a bit of a broken belter. You have a bit of a ascent of higher bars in the middle, especially ages 35 to 54. That's what I'd expect. You're capturing a lot of staff, and you're capturing a lot of parenting-age folks in those age groups as well. But you hit your 65-plus. That's really what I want to see on this slide, and is your community. The next question, right, is your primary residence in the School District of Holman? You live in a very commutable area, obviously, and as a staff member, I'm under no requirement to live within your district boundaries. So I get the survey because I'm a staff member, but we want to weed those non-resident staff members out. Likewise, for any parents who chooses to open and enroll into the district, they have an email address on files when they get the survey, but they're not a resident, or by definition, they wouldn't need to open and enroll in. We want to weed those folks out. And if I have a property, or I have a mailbox, or in some way have a PO box in the district, but it's not my primary residence, we're going to weed those folks out as well. So on many analyses moving forward, we're only going to focus on the 93% that said yes, because those are the folks that have the ability to control an election within your district boundaries. Did double-check this with the district team. So I think this is about what you would expect in terms of the major population center speeding into the district. So unsurprisingly, perhaps, the Village of Holman was on top. But you did have representation from all of your municipalities that in some way, shape, or form pay property taxes to the school district, down to the town of Hamilton on the bottom, which also gives me confidence in your mailing list as well, knowing that we didn't miss any municipalities in your survey. Well, that's weird. I don't know why that looks like that. It doesn't look like my own screen here. We're going to ask two questions here, and I don't know why it's wonky. We want to know specifically how staff are feeling. That's over on the left. We'll want to specifically know how parents are feeling. We're going to look that group in isolation. And then the no-no of these two questions. We're going to isolate non-parents, non-staff, and we're going to look at how those folks look as well, because they're the biggest part of your community, so we really want to figure out how that group is looking as well. And then kind of a demographic question, but it certainly fits into this section of the survey. How do you like to receive school or district information? So it's carefully ordered, not how do you, because you may be doing something that I don't want you to do. You know, you do this, but I really want to see you do mine. So instead, it's a preference question. How do you like to receive information from us at the district? Your non-parents, non-staff are represented in purple, and overwhelmingly, that group prefers school or district newsletters sent out to them. A matter of 62%, but I would kind of say there's a far behind tier two for the Cooley, Cool-A Courier, and school or district web sites, but not too much else there in terms of non-parents, non-staff, a smattering of Facebook, emails, and we got them, and then towards the bottom across tribute. Parents are a bit more balanced, but when you want parents to know something, certainly send them an email. They also really value the newsletters. And then make sure the website, website is up to date for them, and Facebook as well. You're giving quite a few eyeballs to your Facebook page as well. Then we're in the blue section. So this here is one of those slides that you would have, or one of those set of texts that you would have seen when you took your survey. So in general, as you recall, this talked a little bit about how much money you were looking to test, how you would use the money, and then the most important number, maybe the entire survey. All that's willing to do, but how much is it going to cost me as a taxpayer in the School District of Holman as it relates to the trend of the tax bill rates as well? And then we get into the first question. Would you support that operational referendum? So we've stripped out anybody who doesn't live there. We're looking specifically at residents, and this slide is only your staff. Just to herald where 3/4 of your staff said yes to the operational referendum as described, Parents, just under 2/3. 63% of your parent residents said yes to that operational referendum base plan. You do, however, take a step here below majority. Your non-parents, non-staff came in at 37% support for the operational referendum as described. I herald where majority said no at this point. But like I said a moment ago, not all of these groups are the same size. Your non-parents, non-staff are a much heftier chunk of your community than parents and staff are. So we need to pull this data together. Same question, same items, same subgroups, everything's the same, but the only thing we did here then is weigh the support based on how big each of these groups are. So telling you things you already know, you have a pretty young community overall compared to some of the other communities we work with. About 30% of the community are parents. Their support was at 63%. The non-parents, non-staff, they're about 70% of the community. They came in at 37%. Staff are typically no more than 1%, often less than 1% of the parent community. So when we take this equation to fruition, what this is telling us is if you, as the board, put this question on the ballot as it was described, below 50%, 44.8% specifically, would support the operational referendum as it was described. We then asked, if you do need to make cuts, where should you begin? Interestingly, here, there was quite a bit of corroboration across the groups. So actually, the number one item where your community is telling you to make cuts if needed, for all three subgroups, your non-parents, non-staff, your parents in your blue, their number one item across all those groups was reducing middle and high school athletics and extracurricular activities. This is then descending order by your purple folks, your non-parents, non-staff. They are then telling you if you need to make cuts. Following that, consider reducing course offerings district-wide, transportation, and delay updates to textbook and classroom materials. Down at the bottom, very few non-parents, non-staff are telling you to reduce spending on routine building maintenance. People get it, because that's the same issue they would run into in their own home. The longer you put something off, the more expensive it gets. For your parents, the data stayed pretty much the same. Like I said, their number one cost-cutting option was reducing middle or high school athletics and extracurricular opportunities, followed by the delaying to textbook and classroom materials. And then it was fairly even, so they're looking at reducing course offerings district-wide. Staff had the same message. That top one is their top one, delaying textbooks and classroom materials, and then a few other ideas as well from your staff. And then just a smattering fairly equal in the low 20s across your staff. Everybody though thinks about reducing spending on routine building maintenance and that they could. You can probably see the writing on the wall where this is going, and as these, as these costs get bigger, but nevertheless, finishing out the rest of your survey. Back to a blue slide here, so this is for data, what was in your survey for Project One, specifically focused on Empire Stadium and some of the surrounding updates. We reviewed what this cost would be, including the tax impact in total, for 100K of property value, in an effort to make that multiplication as easy as possible. Staff, to support this referendum by an extra 370K, slightly over majority, 53% specifically, were supportive of expanding the referendum for the Empire Stadium projects. Parents, just below majority, at 48%. And non-parents, non-staff, just over 1/4 were supportive of this project. 50% said no. So if you were to expand the referendum by 370K for those Empire Stadium projects, 1/3 of your community would support that in the ballot box. Last but not least, Project Two included everything so far, and then a few surrounding updates, whether it's the auxiliary field on the varsity baseball and softball fields, for an all-in cost of just under $5,499, 176 per. Parents were, or excuse me, staff were below majority, 43%. For everything so far, the base, Project One and Project Two, parents came in at 40% support. And non-parents, non-staff, just over 1 in 5, non-parents, non-staff would be supportive of everything. So if the School District of Holman were to put everything on the ballot at one time, just over 1/4 of the community would support it. Last but not least, then I thought it was instructive. So this was the overall satisfaction question, excuse me, went over one on your survey here, but this is what they asked previously. So in red, on a scale of 0 to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? You can look at this in multiple ways, one of which is just purely eyeballing the data. You can see that you have a lot more greens, a lot more likely to recommend you, than you do those reds and oranges down there at the bottom. So that's just one quick and easy way to see how we'll be stacking up in terms of whether people will be working a good job. Another way to look at it, and a second way, is by looking at your score this year. At 7.35, you're toward neutrality, certainly well among 5 in terms of whether people would recommend you on a 0 to 10 scale. A third way to look at this data is to compare between other districts that look like you. You are scoring better than your comparison pool by about 2/10 of a point or so. 7.35 again is your score. The score for your comparison school districts is 7.18. You're above where most of your comparison pool is. A fourth way to look at this data is just by doing some simple math. So 27 and 14 is 41, plus another 18 is 59%. So 59% gave themselves an 8 or 9 or 10. 1/4, actually, over 1/4 gave you a perfect score. But the reason I like to do the quick math of eights, nines, or 10s, folks that give themselves an 8 or 9 or 10, the research behind this question suggests that they will act as ambassadors on your behalf. In other words, that means that they will go out and talk well about what the School District of Holman is doing, and you don't need to motivate them to do so. They are the ones to initiate the conversation with their friends and family members talking about the cool things that are going on in Holman schools. Your 6 and, excuse me, your 6 and 7 folks, they have a positive association with you. They're just not quite at the point where they're ready to strike up a conversation with the person behind them, in the concession stand in mind of all the cool things going on at school. But when you take them into account, we're not even wrong. 59% plus another 9 is 68, plus another 4 is 72. So just under 3/4 of your respondents are willing to recommend you to a friend or family member, and that's good news, and you can see that more now here in terms of your ability is more better than your peers. The fifth way to look at this data, I'm thinking of mine, the fifth way to look at this data is by looking at the comparisons to the self. So this time around, you were at 7.35. Two years ago, when you did the survey, you were at 7.35. You didn't move one iota from before to now. And I don't think that's a bad thing, and I think what that's telling you here is it's not necessarily a measure of satisfaction. It's not necessarily a, we the community are mad at you, or this score would have dropped. Instead, I think it's really coming down to cost, I think, at this point, and the cost of people's pocketbook for what's here, because in terms of satisfaction, you were exactly where you were before, and you continue to remain where most of your other schools are. So in sum, I guess I would go back to this base plan, since this is the project that was the closest. My takeaway here is for this referendum base plan as it was described, it would not pass a ballot today. But at 40, figure 45%, I think you have permission from your community, I think there's enough support to take something to ballot in April. I just think backing up here, it can't be exactly what was in the survey as it was described, because that, that would be supported, but I think that would be what the boards and administrators, next piece of homework would be, is, well, what are we getting along with? Can't be exactly what was in the survey, but I think certainly there's enough support to take something to ballot for, as we'll be to see on April 1st, 25th, 26th. I'm going to take a swig of water, but please let me know what questions you have as we go through this.
I get, can you hear me okay?
We'll have to.
Um, he might need to repeat it.
Well, we'll repeat it to you, Rob. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay. No, I was just curious if there's a way to, I guess, like, how accurate is this data reflected in the people who actually take the time to vote? So, I mean, is it usually end up being pretty spot-on, or is it that, you know, in a non-presidential election, that maybe that 65 and year, 65 and older group doesn't tend to vote as much, or something like that?
Yeah, really good question. I actually did hear that, Chris. So a couple of ways to answer that. One, I actually look back at your old survey that we did a couple of years ago. Your facility question was structured a little bit differently, but we did test your operational referendum there. I think your operational referendum, we predicted, no, we predicted 61.8%, but it came in at 63.3. So we were off by a little over 1%, so it was pretty darn close to the pre-base operational referendum. The, let me preface what I'm going to say, but I think I'm glad you did do this, but districts have actually chosen to run non-anonymous surveys before, where people actually have to put their name on it. I think it's a bad idea. But what that does allow us to do is compare who takes the survey with the voting register list. And the middle of that diagram is pretty big, and we can see that the people who take the survey are pretty close to the people who vote on Election Day. So we feel pretty good about that. Over the last, I think, well, I have the data from November 2020 forward. Since that election, our accuracy rate is about 92% or so, 93%. Doesn't pass. You know, if the data tells us a referendum is going to pass, and it does, that's a win. But the other side is also true. Every once in a while, we'll have a board that takes a plane to ballot anyhow, even though it doesn't look like it's going to have support, and it fails. But that's still a way to know what works, because that, that means that the data is matching what ultimately happened on Election Day. So that's how we define our success, not by referents past, but does the data we present match what ultimately happens on Election Day? If you're curious for this year, I'm telling you, because I only finished this up today, and I was hoping somebody would ask. We were 39 of 45 last Tuesday, and we were 28 of 23 in April in terms of whether our predictions were going up.
All right, thank you.
I have one of a similar nature. Going all the way back to the survey information slide, I've been staring at this for a little bit, and the 29%, so that's 29% of everyone 18 and up in our district boundary?
Uh, the ages?
I guess I was trying to figure out, like, because our population, if I'm remembering the sign correctly, is much higher. So the 20, what is, it's 29% of what for the respondents? Of just the people we sent it to?
Which slide are you talking about?
Yes, so this slide, all the people.
No, survey information.
Not the people who were sent to, the people who took the survey, how do they self-identify their age? Out of the folks who took your survey, a little over 1/4 identified themselves to be 28, or a little over 1/4 identified themselves to be senior citizens. Is that what you're saying?
No, sorry, not this slide. The one that says survey information at the top?
One before this, Rob. There we go.
This one?
29% response rate.
Yeah. I guess I'm asking, like, could you just take us through who all received the survey? Like, who the 29% is of?
So that, that was a, we use our mailing list, working with the postal service. We did recognize there were, so it's all residents in our district area. We did, partway through the process, we recognized there were two postal areas that cover the majority of the Onalaska School District, but then we cross-referenced, and many of them were, were already sent the survey via email because they were parents in the district. And then we also did hand mail some of those. So the majority of people, we hit it pretty close. Could there have been some resident districts where, that didn't get it in the mail? Yes, but it was a very minimal amount. The margin of error would have been very low. Is that what you were wondering, Maggie?
Yeah, yes, and I think I was just puzzling, puzzled over the, the 29% seems really high. And is that, like, is that 29%? Yeah, that's a good point. Is it households in the district responded, or individuals above the age of 18? Because 29% of individuals above the age of 18, isn't that more than 2,500 people?
Oh, yeah, so the survey is set up by households, because that data is more stable. Tax records, most counties update the death records for the taxes once a year in April. So if you follow that, you can actually inadvertently have been surveyed to quite a few people who have passed away, which obviously isn't good, and that then allows your data to be skewed, or people get very, why are you sending this to somebody who passed away? And including college students who may or may not have residency still. The household data stays very stable. So we work to do our best to make sure every household has at least one, but then we make sure the district has export codes and paper copies, just in case, sponsors don't agree. I know that never happens, but just in case employed, then we have some export statistics.
Any other questions? No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Take care.
All right, moving on to item 8.2. I welcome Executive Director of Instructional Services Kim Edwards, along with educators Nicole Dexter, Dylan Hogan, and Jamie Okusko to present the new course proposals. This item will appear on the November 25th consent agenda.
Nikki, do you want to come on up first? Good evening. We have some pretty exciting course proposals that members of our high school team would like to share with you. The first is Nikki Dexter, who is part of our high school math team, and she's presenting an introduction to data science.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name's Nikki Dexter. I teach math at the high school. I also coach the robotics team. It's making me really uncomfortable to have you all behind me, so, sorry about that. So after that fun kind of data dig we just did, that ties in really perfectly to a course that I think would be a benefit to our district, an intro to data science class. So the first question I kind of have gotten from students, as I've been kind of pitching the idea, is what is data science? They're questioning if it's a math class or a science class. It is a math class, and it covers some kind of key foundations in math, but it also extends beyond that into kind of a programming sphere. It ties in content knowledge and other fields that they might be interested in, and then focuses a lot on how do you communicate things about data, right? So we just saw a bunch of really great data visualizations. How do we look at those and interpret those and share those with people in a meaningful way? The math foundations, since it is an underlying kind of math course, so here are some of the different kind of fields of math that it starts to explore. Statistics we do offer already at the high school, but it extends beyond that into kind of deeper levels of probability theory. Linear algebra, which currently isn't really covered anywhere except for a smidge in pre-calculus. Modeling, and then it does bring in some calculus concepts in a way that's kind of sneaky. Students don't always know they're doing calculus, but they are using technology. So kind of the, the reason that I started looking into this is a couple of years ago, I was trying to decide what to do my master's in, and so I was looking at, like, what are the hot topics in math right now? Like, what would be the field that would make the most sense? And data science is really that, that subject right now in the math field. So I just kind of have a couple of things showing why data is so important, and why we want to give our students that opportunity to be engaging with data in a meaningful way. So this is the first one, and all of my data science classes in my master's degree always show this infographic in terms of, like, what type of data is being created. So if you look at this, you can see just kind of the intense amount of data that's being created at any minute. It's a little blurry even from back here, but, you know, we have millions of hours of video being uploaded on YouTube. We have millions of hours of people streaming every one minute, right? So if you think about that, where is that data going? Who is organizing that? Who's kind of surveying that, and where is it being kept? Crypto, Venmo- Venmo, those things are not, you know, trivial sort of data interactions, right? You have encryption, decryption, all of that to keep your, your information safe. And so all of those things are happening every minute, and so this field is kind of exploding day by day. It's just growing bigger and bigger, and a great place for us to start engaging students. Another one here is kind of just showing the volume of data that's being created over time. So you can look back, this goes back only to 2010, and you can see how data has grown just in that short amount of time. They're predicting this year that we will kind of produce and consume 181 zettabytes of data, which is about, like, one zettabyte is 1,000 trillion books, if you think about that. So to, like, store 1,000 trillion books is one zettabyte, they're predicting we will produce about 181 of those. In that, there's a lot of careers that students can be looking at. So here's kind of just a projection, again, on that growth rate in terms of employment level. It really peaked during COVID, started to dip a little, and now it's peaking again. This is the, like I said, this is the field that people in math are going into, applied math, data science, those things that we can do with programming. Every business has some sort of data science unit, whether it's data analysis, data science, data engineering, like, every business has one of those. And the amount of data that every business is seeing is growing kind of exponentially. So, the careers for data science are not going anywhere in the near future. Just thinking back to kind of what we have right now, so we have the kind of traditional Algebra 1, Geometry Algebra 2 path. That path was adopted first in 1892 and has not changed since then. So if you think about kind of what was happening in math in 1892 compared to now, a little bit of a difference in that. We, as like, a country, kind of started really adopting that in 1957 during the space race, trying to get those satellites up in space, get someone up there. And so they were kind of prepping students for what they needed to know in order to do that at the time. Okay, nowadays, that's not really what people do. So this kind of pathway to calculus is not as representative of the STEM field that students might expect nowadays going into these different careers, right? Their, their understanding of calculus and being able to do it by hand is not the same as it was, or in the same need as it was 50 years ago. This is one of my favorite pictures. I'm getting one for my classroom. I'm pretty excited. So this is a picture of Margaret Hamilton. She's standing next to the code that she and her team had written for the Apollo landing. And I just think it really kind of shows the difference between then and now. So when we were really pushing this kind of Algebra 1, Geometry Algebra 2, this is what they were doing. This is what they were preparing people for, and this isn't what software engineering math looks like now. We have a very different landscape. We have different tools, and our current pathway does not really help students engage in those or learn how to use those effectively. Thinking about just how are we, again, kind of trying to meet that district mission, the whole course focuses on community interest. So students are analyzing data from their community whenever possible, and focusing on things that are interesting to them. So there's a whole unit on Spotify, and how do they predict what songs they're gonna kind of pull up next in your Spotify? There's units on skin color recognition, and what does that do to AI, and why are there biases, and how does that impact folks living today? There's units on lots of other things, I guess, that are just really interesting in the community, and students get to find that data themselves, and then we just kind of guide them towards, like, what should your project focus on at any one time. But students really get to kind of drive the interest, and it ends in kind of a capstone project, where they are working as a data scientist on a data set that they find themselves. The other thing that I think is important is that it's really kind of a more inclusive pathway into STEM than the traditional calculus pathway. There's a lot of studies that show that women and minorities are left out of the calculus pipeline, and for a lot of women especially, that's kind of the barrier to their STEM career. They take a calculus course, they don't do well, they leave STEM altogether. So this offers a different pathway, a different way that they can engage in STEM that's more meaningful, that has a kind of a more unique building, and a lot of different ways that they can interact with STEM. This is just some of my favorite quotes. I don't have to read them all, but it just kind of ties back to that idea that the traditional calculus pathway is great for people that want to be physicists, that want to be engineers. Calculus is still really important, but it leaves a lot of people out, and there are other kind of creative ways they can get into STEM. Looking at pathways, the only prerequisite for this course predicted is geometry, meaning that students could take it instead of Algebra 2, with a special note that the direct admit program in Wisconsin requires that they still take Algebra 2, so it doesn't kind of take care of that. But for students that maybe aren't thinking they want to go to a four-year college, they could take it instead of Algebra 2. They could take it after Algebra 2, they could take it after or instead of pre-calculus, they could take it at the same time as pre-calculus, they could take it after AP Stats if they really enjoyed statistics. There's really kind of a lot of places it could fit in, and one of the things we're finding in the math department is just not having a lot of options for students. So this would be kind of a doorway for, for another pathway that students might be interested in. The other interesting thing is that, except for geometry, it doesn't, like, build in in an exact spot. So again, it just offers a lot of fluidity for where students might want to learn about some data. Some important things to note is that this course will be as rigorous as Algebra 2 and pre calc. We're not kind of introducing it as a, if you think Algebra 2 is too hard, you should take data science. That's not the purpose. So it'll be as rigorous, it'll just be kind of in a different lens. So they'll be learning to program and find other tools that they can use to do math in a more modern way that maybe they haven't experienced before. It still covers significant math and computer science standards, and it also even covers some kind of ELA standards, as they're expected to present and communicate their information. The other thing that this came about in the department is that the Common Core standards kind of expect that you start offering pathways at Algebra 2, and we currently don't have that. Every student takes Algebra 2. So right now, we have over 300 students taking Algebra 2, and as you can imagine, it's hard to tailor a course to 300 students in terms of what their goals are and what their interests are. A couple of things about data literacy. It's kind of an important pillar for students to walk away from high school with, like, we just interacted with a bunch of data, and I hear you're gonna do more data after this. And like, every citizen needs to be able to kind of interact with and interpret and work with data. So these are kind of some of the topics that the course will cover, and those things all are kind of a part of this data literacy idea. So probability, we saw those percentages, we saw weighted average. I'm loving that that came first. It's really helping me with this. Statistical modeling, how do we make predictions? Those two things are covered in AP Stats, but then all the rest really would be unique to this course. One that I like to point out is programming. This would be a great class, too, for students that are interested in programming. Our current AP class only teaches Java, and for those of us in the room familiar with programming, Java is not the most common language used out in the field these days. So this class would teach Python, which would be a good opportunity for students to learn, as well as machine learning and AI. We're interacting with those more and more every day. I think students would enjoy learning about how those are built and how to, to work with them. So just kind of some interesting topics that would be covered here that really aren't covered anywhere else in our curriculum. A few logistics. This will cover grades 10 to 12. Again, just having needed taking geometry, I expect most students to take it after Algebra 2, however, they would not have to. Still will be one math credit, just like any other math class. And in terms of class sizes, really, this should just pull from all of our other ones. So it should decrease our, our other class sizes in Algebra 2 and in pre calc and in our APs. Also, really, any teachers that kind of have those courses would be able to take on data science without impacting any of the other teachers. It also, right now, is totally free hypothetically. All of the programming stuff that we would need, everything like that is all, they have free versions online, so it wouldn't cost us any money to kind of get the class up and running. It's a free curriculum that we can find online, and then all of the, the technology at this time is free as well. And I did the research, it's all compatible with Chromebooks, which is another difference from our AP programming classes. Those are not compatible on Chromebooks. These are just a couple of course descriptions that were kind of suggested. I guess I won't read through all of them. I think the big idea is just that we're going to be exploring math in a way that is more modern, uses modern tools, uses programming. Most of our students really should be leaving with some sort of programming understanding. It's just kind of a basic need in a lot of businesses these days, depending on how you're, you're interacting with it. And just really kind of provides new opportunities to learn math in a way that is, is new and relevant and kind of different from the pathway that we've had before. I tell my Algebra 2 kids all the time, they ask, when am I ever gonna have to use this? You know, it's about building your brain mathematically. This is about, like, how do people actually do math in the world? Like, what tools are they using? How are they doing that? How are they making predictions? And how does that impact me in my life? And as we all interact with data, I think it's just important that our students have opportunities to do that and, and learn about it as well.
Questions for Nikki on this course proposal? Any questions?
Just to clarify, the taking data science instead of Algebra 2 would satisfy requirements for graduation, like a high school diploma, but it wouldn't satisfy requirements for UW direct entry or-
Direct entry. So they could still apply, right? And hypothetically, you know, they, I don't see a reason why maybe they wouldn't get in because they took this instead, depending on their career interest. It's just something about that, like, direct admit application that it would hinder them from.
So far.
Yeah.
So they're looking at that every single year, but so far, data science is not one of them that they're pulling up at this point, at this point for Wisconsin Direct.
Yeah, and many states are looking at that. So that could change in the coming years.
Right, any other questions?
Um, sorry, another question. Do you know if there are other schools in the area that offer data science classes?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
So this would really be a place for us to kind of set ourselves apart, I think.
Kind of piggybacking on that, and you kind of mentioned it, you've kind of put fewers out there, I'm assuming, on interest levels in this class? Would it be offered more than at one time? Do you think you'd have more than one course offering per day, I guess?
Yeah, you mean more than one section?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think, at least in the first year, we could fill one. I think moving forward, there'll be more. I think that students are really looking for that opportunity to kind of break away from pencil-paper kind of chicken-scratch work. I think we would draw from both our, our computer programming-interested students are really mathematically-inclined students. I think we'd pull from the kind of marketing areas where they don't really need Algebra 2 pre calc. But like I said, every business, right, has data, and they're gonna expect someone to be able to work with it, so I think we'll pull from that crowd. I pulled the robotics team, that was hitting pretty high. So overall, I do think there's kind of just a lot of different groups that we would pull interest from.
I'd love to talk to you more sometime, because you're completely speaking my language with my day job. So we, we're looking for data scientists all the time, and they're hard to come by.
You can't have her.
I'm not stealing her. I just, no, but I think that this course is absolutely important and valuable, because we're looking for people with Bayesian statistics and AI ML and big data processing, and processing, you know, hundreds of terabytes a day.
Yeah.
And programming, I would say, add R to your curriculum. Python and R are like the most important programming languages.
I love R. I'm so glad you brought that up.
But, no, you're, you're definitely speaking my language, and we definitely have a need for this.
Awesome. Thank you. I agree.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a familiar face from last year. We have Jamie Okusko, who has English 105, this is Literature and Human Experience, for a proposal for our English Department.
Evening. How are you guys doing tonight?
You've heard a lot of numbers. I have a few in mind, just so that I can compete. Let's start with the 105 part of English 105.
Numbers are my thing. Last year, I proposed the English 100 to you, which was Academic Reading and Writing. That class is going well so far. I have 25 students now and have another 25 or 26 next semester. The other side of English 100 is English 105. So if you take a quick look at the rationale, and I know you guys have hopefully had a chance to look through all this information, what we're really looking to do, once again, is give high school students a opportunity to take a rigorous college course right here at Holman High. They'll earn the high school credits and the college credits at a discount. It'll also prepare students for post-secondary, and then we're looking to align to meet HHS and UW River Falls standards. I'm just gonna read the course descriptions so we best understand it. The study of important human issues as they are experienced in literature, such as innocence and experience, conformity and rebellion, men and women, dreams, obsessions, and realizations, aging and death. The course will also then provide students with the introduction of major literary genres. The numbers haven't changed really from last year, and what you saw, so we're looking for $105 per credit as opposed to $498. At that reduced price, we're looking at overall $315 versus $1,494. We do have the option for the $50 per credit scholarship, qualified for students for free and used lunch. Our area, of course, then, is English. It would be for the high school level, 0.5 credits for the high school, and then three college at the university credit. What this would do is balance out the other side of English 100. The st-
It's a tough word.
Would you believe that last year I gave a speech to a much bigger crowd, and it went much more smoothly? Let's try it again. Statistics. 53% of the graduating class are targeted to go to post-secondary. UW River Falls data shows that 96% to 98% of those students were successful in completing the course and earning the credits. It will not increase the graduation requirement. It will help students earn those college credits. As a matter of fact, if they were to take English 100 and then 105 on the opposite side, they would enter the university having their freshman year college credits taken care of as far as English is concerned. It may impact enrollment at senior-level literary classes, although the literature class offerings depend on who wants to select to take which class which year. So it's hard to say it would reduce this class or that class. We just aren't sure what the students are interested in right now. They'll be placed in the course based on their previous English experiences, targeting, looking for AB or above in the classes that they should take at the foundational level. Qualified students then are also admitted to UW River Falls, and then the school district for Holman already has the existing referendum, sorry, memorandum that you guys put together last year in the fall. They register for the class of the standard system. They also register them from UW River Falls. Students in the program that are students both in the UW River Falls system and the UW system. The class, again, would transfer as a direct one-for-one, so they would get the literature credit straight across at any university that they decide to attend. And finally, faculty support from UW River Falls. When I submitted the 100 syllabus, it was approved by two professors at the university level. It was approved by two administrators at the high school, and then Ms. Edwards also approved it before it was rolled out to the students. What questions you have for me?
Uh, okay, I'm trying to figure out how to formulate this question. So, at the university level, is 100 a prerequisite for 105? Is there any-
Um, typically, no. They just have to take a, a writing and a reading somewhere within their freshman level, and they can flip. It doesn't matter which one goes first.
So there's no, there wouldn't be any kind of conflict if somebody went to the 105 before they did the 100, or the-
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, and then we have one last proposal. This is also for our English Department, and this is Dylan Hogan to present this one.
Good evening. I'm Dylan Hogan, and I teach in the ELA Department at Holman High School. So just a little bit of background from me, kind of before we jump in. Before I was an English teacher, I worked as a business development writer and a technical writer for a construction company in La Crosse, where I wrote all the marketing materials and did all the proposals for our jobs that we would bid on. So I would take engineer speak and turn it into human speak. And so tonight, I'm here to propose Technical Reading and Writing as a course for the high school, and it's a course that's designed to instruct students on those reading and writing skills that they're gonna take with them right out of high school, and directly into the workforce, or into sort of those technical-based college programs. Typically, those two-year programs that they would head into, diesel mechanic, John Deere tractor programs, whatever it might be. And the course is really designed to explore variety of reading and writing-based skills, you know, including our communication within the workplace, contract language, instruction guides, manuals, content-specific writing, focusing on being concise and precise writing, and how to tailor sort of the writing to an audience, no matter what that audience would be. So it would be a senior-level curriculum class, worth half a credit at Holman High School. And really, when we look at the numbers for it, so I threw some data in myself here, couldn't, I couldn't make myself stick out too much. We look at about 42% of our graduating class does not go on to any sort of post-secondary. They go right into the workforce. That number could increase, and does increase when- That number could increase, does increase when you include those students who go into that two-year technical program. Really, it's kind of that 42% that kind of we, this class would be aiming directly at. So I think there's an area of need, I know that there's an area of need that our student body, we can kind of more focus them on. We can really, really kind of help them along with skills that they're going to take with them right away. Like I said, 37% attend a four-year college, which is absolutely fantastic, and 21% attended two-year college. When you add that to that 42%, you have 63%. My math skills are a little rusty, but I am believing that's right. That could potentially benefit from this course. I pulled some information out, there's surveys going around, found a good one. About over 1,200 businesses across the country found that the biggest skill, sort of that Generation Z, which is kind of the community, which is the generation that's currently entering the workforce, they struggle with those demands at high school. And in particular, they struggle with the skills needed to function within the workplace. And in particular, the biggest need they found was a lack of communication skills. And they know the material, but they don't really know how to get it across in a way that suits all people. And so this class will be focusing on those three straight Rs, reading, writing, arithmetic. They're still crucial and they still need to be there. Really, 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 we would be hitting on those soft skills. In particular, written communication skills, like I said, 65% of Generation Z surveyed they struggle with communication in the workplace. And again, that aforementioned survey found that 70% of new hires struggle with their communication. And in addition to our written communication skills, we focus a lot on the aspect of problem-solving and how to go about doing that. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on these standards, but just because they're, while they're fascinating to the English department, they might not be to everyone else. But really, they focus a lot on how they're going to write, how they're going to read, and what technical skills are in there. And really, the important parts of their being, being precise, being concise, and matching to an audience are kind of the three most important ones. So the course itself won't increase graduation requirements. What it actually might do is impact enrollment in existing junior and senior-level reading and writing class enrollments. In particular, where it might help students along is as we sort of increase our apprenticeship and work release programs. Students that kind of go in there will fit nicely into this kind of technical reading and writing course. No real financial costs, as most of the materials will make. I've taught this class in the past, so I have a lot of previous materials and previous texts for it. In the upcoming years, it may be nonfiction texts that we have to buy eventually, but that's down the road. And then they have to pass 9, 10, and ELA 11. Or in very specific cases, will have, will be in ELA 11 taking this if there are early graduation requirements. And then students will just register through the class through our standard class, through our standard system.
And that's it, any questions for Dylan?
Yeah, so you were able to kind of pull up those statistics around the number of students that are in the pool of potential candidates? Have you done any, like, feelers out into some of these groups to see what the interest level is like for them?
Yeah, so I deal with students, you know, a whole mix of them. And I've kind of specifically targeted students who I know are going into kind of, I've already talked about whether it be like electrical programs or diesel mechanic programs, talk to them one-on-one if this would be a class that they'd be interested in. Largely, yes, right? They're more interested in learning about what they can take with them and sort of how they could. I want to know how to do aspects of my job, I don't necessarily want to know how to analyze more and more literature.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, moving on to item 8.3. Kim Edwards will continue with the Wisconsin State Assessment System report. This item is for report-only.
Well, since data and numbers are the theme of the night, here we go. So I have the Wisconsin Student Assessment System report that we usually do this time of the year. This is a look back on how our students performed on the state assessments that were administered last spring. So it is by and large what makes up the dashboard measures under the Student Learning Focus area. So if you look at our dashboard, you'll see Wisconsin Forward and ACT are heavily represented there. Looking at ACT and, or I'm sorry, ELA and Math with Wisconsin Forward and then ACT at the high school. So our annual state assessments are really valuable. Just like to remind everyone, there's just one measure that we look at when we're looking at how we're doing to prepare our students to be college and career-ready. But again, very valuable information, we want to let you know we weigh that among a larger body of evidence as well. So we use the results as part of our continuous improvement. We identify not only areas where we can improve, but areas to celebrate, things that we're doing really well as well. The other piece is that this is reported out in proficiency categories, which is part of our accountability ratings, which is required by state and federal law. So actually, next month, I will be back presenting this in a slightly different way with our school report cards. But that's part of how that's represented as part of that accountability measure. There have been significant updates this year, I do want you to be aware of. While the assessments themselves are going to look very similar to what I've reported in years past, they've done some significant updating in terms of how those cut scores look. So we're going to have a harder time comparing year to year, but we are going to look at our peer district data to kind of get some idea of how we're doing until we have more longitudinal data with the new cut scores. They did realign these to better align with our new academic standards, which are represented, represented particularly in the Wisconsin Forward. And then they also realigned our accountability, or our proficiency levels, rather. Where we used to have advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic, they've really focused on more of an asset-based approach. So you'll see advanced, meeting, approaching, and developing in terms of levels of proficiency. So we have three components of the state assessment system. As I mentioned before, we have Wisconsin Forward. We're going to see ELA in Math in grades three through eight. That's testing consistency for all of those grade levels listed. In social studies, we do spot checks in fourth, eighth, and 10th grade, and then in science in fourth and eighth. Dynamic learning maps covers up to 1% of our population. That is an assessment specifically identified within a student's IEP as a better fit. And then we have, at the high school level, the ACT suite. So at ninth and 10th grade, we'll see the ACT secure and then ACT in writing for our 11th graders. So as I mentioned, the cut scores look vastly different this year. So looking at year-to-year data is going to be a little trickier for us, but you'll notice across the bottom, you'll see that we have our peer districts listed. So we can kind of see how they responded or how their scores look compared to the new cut scores as well as ours. So you see Holman represented with the red diamond, I guess it is. We have our peers in blue, and then the state is the green triangle. And you'll see that represented out on the far end of our data table there as well. You'll see that 67, or 66.7% of our students scored in the meeting and, meeting and advanced range compared to our peer dis, the average of our peer districts, rather, and then our, the state as well. So we had a nice upward trajectory, traditionally scoring higher than our peers in this, but really kind of taking off even more this last year with that as well. When we look at math, you'll see that we are, we scored at the 66.6% who were meeting and advanced on the math portion of the Wisconsin Forward. You'll see that while we are still lagging just a little bit behind the average of our peer districts, we're doing a nicer job in terms of closing that gap as well. So we'll be watching next year to see year-on-year how that's looking for us. Science, again, this is just grades four and eight. We had slightly more modest gains here. We were up to 61.7% meeting that proficiency, up to, I'm sorry, 63.4, putting us just slightly below the average of our peer districts. But again, significantly that above our state. Social studies, Wisconsin Forward, that's that fourth, eighth, and 10th grade data set. You'll see here that, again, we had gains, we're a little bit more dramatic here with the new benchmarks, up to 70.2% of our students making that proficiency mark up from that 64.3. That's pulling us even a little bit further from our peers than, than we were last year, setting ourselves just a little bit further apart. That's another one, again, that we're going to want to watch, again, all of these year-on-year to see how that looks for us. On this, here we have a breakdown of how our performances in ELA Math by our subgroup in terms of our race, ethnicity, and our socioeconomic status. You'll see, we did the School District of Holman demographic. So this is the demographic makeup at a point in time in the School District of Holman. Well, this is where we're just looking at grades three through eight here, so it's not exactly apples to apples, apples to apples, but it will get us in the ballpark. So you see in this column, it's the percentage of our students meeting, that meeting and advanced proficiency for each of the subgroups in ELA, and then over here in Math. Green indicates that our scores actually went up from last year for each of our subgroups, which, again, it's hard to make any clear conclusions because our scores went up in general because the scores, cut scores changed so dramatically. But for example, 9%, of our student population is Asian. 44.1% of our Asian students scored meeting and advanced in ELA, 46.1 in Math. And then you also have the breakdown for our, by economic status as well. Again, all green showing improvements here, which we would expect given what we saw in terms of overall performance on those, with those new cut scores. Continuing to look at Wisconsin Forward, ELA and Math, we're breaking down by two other of our marginalized subgroups, which is our students with, or our students with disabilities, and then English proficiency status. And again, here you see lots of green, greater levels of reading, meeting proficiency in those subgroups as well. Though you will, you do see a distinct gap between the dominant group and the subgroup. And that takes us to ACT, pre-ACT secure, excuse me. This is the ninth and 10th grade students, all of our students except those that do take the DLM. This is five test areas, English, reading, writing, math, and science. And we'll break down each of those. When we look at our ninth and 10th graders, you'll see that we are continuing to trend upwards, actually quite dramatically here on ELA with our ninth and 10th graders, with 55.7% of our students meeting proficiency. Our first year in a lot of years, where we actually outperform the average of our peer districts, which is pretty exciting. When we look at math, again, our ninth and 10th graders, we see a similar trend here, as we saw with our third through eighth in Forward with math. So a pretty dramatic upward climb and closing the gap here as well. That's one we're going to continue to want to watch over time. And then science is interesting. In eighth and ninth, we slid back, I'm sorry, our ninth and 10th grade, we slid back in our proficiency levels just slightly. But you'll see that's also the trend in the state and with our peer districts as well. In fact, our dip was a little less significant than it was in terms of the, when we look at the average of our peer districts. Okay, again, you will see the breakdown in terms of our demographics in ELA and Math in the pre-ACT secure, just looking at our ninth and 10th grade performance last spring. Again, we see a lot of green, except for our Hispanic and Latino population, where that's indicated in black because last year we did not have a subgroup that was large enough to report publicly. So we don't really have something to mark that against compared to last year. But then again, with the cut scores being radically different, it's hard to say, you know, year-on-year how, how that's looking in terms of closing gaps for us. And then again, this is still our ninth and 10th graders. This time, we're looking at our students with disabilities compared to our students without disabilities, and then performance for our multilingual compared to our English proficient students. Again, good news, we see a lot of green. We also continue to see that those groups are not, our student groups are not performing at the same level as the dominant group. And that brings us to ACT, our final assessment. This is for our 11th grade students. This, again, has five subject areas that we test, English, reading, writing, math, and science. Last spring, we did dip down just a little bit to 47.5% of our students in the meeting and advanced categories on this assessment. That puts us just slightly below the average of our peer districts, but significantly above our state as well. We've had quite a bit of fluctuation in our ELA, you'll notice on this graph, so that's one we're going to continue to want to watch as well. Math, we have a really nice trend in the upward direction there. You see, we are at 43.7%, climbing in the right direction, but still holding a pretty steady, close to a gap between performance with our peer district. So again, great to see us trending in the right direction, but we'd like to see us gaining a little bit in terms of our performance there as well. Science, we are up to 45.3% of our students meeting those achievement levels, the science portion of the ACT, that holds us a pretty consistent 5% gap the last couple of years between the average of our peers. Again, trending in the right direction, but one that we would like to work on narrowing the gap there as well. And then we take all of those pieces together to get a composite score for the ACT. The highest score of the ACT is at 36. You'll see that our average composite score has dipped back down a little bit to a 19.5. So while you'll notice that the average composite score of our peer districts dipped slightly as well, ours was a little bit more significant. This is a single grade level that we're looking at. Since it's just our 11th grade students, so we're going to see a little bit more fluctuation there, but it's one we're going to continue to want to watch because this is a very significant test, looking, you know, for high school admittance into college and scholarships and those kinds of things as well. So while they aren't necessarily required for all universities, some do look at them, and it is, it is a player in terms of scholarships and such as well. So we also broke down the ACT in terms of some of our marginalized groups, ELA and Math. And then you'll also see a breakdown of their average composite score by group. This is the one assessment where you'll see that we actually have some red, showing that our proficiency in these levels, or in these categories actually went down some. You'll see while we had some nice increases in math, ELA was one that where, when we look at our subgroup performance, where we dipped a little bit, we're struggling some. Also, I'd like to point out the average composite score, the significance difference that you see with some of our marginalized groups compared to the dominant groups. So that's something we're going to want to be looking at as well. Again, the black for our not, non-economically disadvantaged group is black because it is the same as it was last year. And then this is a breakdown by disability status and our English language proficiency status. And again, you'll see that we have some work to do in terms of closing gaps there in terms of performance with our, our subgroups of students. You'll also see with our English proficiency, black because, again, we did not have a large enough subgroup for the one grade level at that point last year. So while the data is a little hard to read through, just knowing that it's, it's hard to compare to last year, again, knowing that those cut scores are so radically different, we did, on the surface level, it shows that we did increase in proficiency in all of our subject areas in Forward, which, Forward, which is our grades three through eight. And our subgroups look to be showing increased levels of proficiency. In ACT secure, the pre-ACT secure, grades nine and 10 again. We also saw some really significant improvement in terms of ELA and Math performance. And then all of our subgroups there also were showing some increased levels of proficiency, knowing that we still have to work, some work to do to make sure that our subgroups are performing at the same level as our dominant groups. ACT grade 11, we did see the highest rate of proficiency in recent history in math and science there, and we did have some gains in proficiency for all subgroups in math, knowing that we're going to have to dive a little deeper in terms of what that looks like in ELA. The biggest takeaway I think we have in all of this is that while we have some shining spots, we still need to work on that message of all means all and making sure that we're in strengthening our core academic areas for all students and making sure that we have really good access for all students in terms of achieving and performing on those grade-level standards. So we've been doing a lot of work, which you've heard chunks of already this year, but we have been doing a lot at the district level, in part, thanks to Act 20, but some just because we were doing, making some steps as well. But you'll see, we have some new district screenings going on this year. You heard some about this last spring when we did... You heard, this year, you heard some about this last spring when we did the ELA update, but we're doing Ames Web Plus 4K through three. We're continuing with the iReady in math and then in our middle school and then pre-ACT nine 11. We actually had a practice test, so to speak, this fall to really gauge how our students are doing and get some practice with the test before we see it for real in the spring to really get some data in terms of how our students are doing and get some instructional ideas on how to make it more successful or so that our students can have more success with that exam in the spring. We do have a new ELA curriculum. You've heard a lot in terms of alignment with our standards, but a pretty significant shift in elementary, actually up through sixth grade where we've implemented CKLA Amplify, which is a pretty comprehensive resource that's very nicely integrated and we're having good results with so far here, getting a lot of good feedback. We also have, and that's part of that shift into the science of reading, we're continuing to work with Wisconsin Reading Corps with our tutors in the buildings, which has been very successful as well. We also continue to have a really great partnership with UWL. In fact, during ER, we have the UWL math team coming in to work with our elementary teachers, which is really exciting and continuing to build that partnership. We'll also be looking at piloting some new research, resources for math as well. We're continuing to dig into our DEI work and make sure that our, not only our resources representative of our students, but their instructional practices are inclusive. And then a lot of work with our district coaching teams, so supporting our buildings in terms of reaching those goals. And then again, we're doing some work with CISA. We've always been a good, or CISA's always been a great partner with us. We're doing a lot with our multilingual program as well and focusing on that subgroup to see if we can boost that a little bit as well. And then also working on creation of a district level strategic implementation guide. So you've heard a lot over the years about our PLC culture and our collaborative teams. This is really going to help set some expectations across the district and buildings in terms of what that looks like. And DEI will be a portion of that as well. So that was a whole lot. What questions do you have? Questions?
Yeah. So in September, when the Forward results came out, it was splashed all over the media that the state quote lowered the standards and that language, the terminology was changed. And so my question is, in Holman, how have you, how are we perceiving this? And overall, because you had already mentioned that it's going to be more difficult now to compare it to previous years. How are we perceiving this, our, how we've done, how our students did on this? And then second of all, will it change our standards on our dashboard? Will it change any of that?
Sure. So a couple of things. One thing is that Wisconsin has had exceptionally high standards in terms of their cut scores. And so they took this opportunity as they introduced the new standards in ELA math into those assessments to really do a deeper dive in terms of what proficiency really looks like. And so while it does make it harder for us to compare to previous year's data, one of the benefits of having our peer districts who are most like us across the state is we're able to get a good look at how that looks in relation to other districts. And so you see that we continue to perform roughly the same, if not a little better in some areas than we have in years past. So that's one thing we're going to want to for sure take a look at moving forward to see how consistent those are, which leads to the next part, which is the district dashboard and our goals. And so early on this year, before we knew a lot of how this all shook out, we saw our preliminary scores and knew we had really blown our previous goals, which were at fifty-five percent out of the water. So we had to do some adjustments, but without really knowing how that's going to look longitudinally as time goes on, we're a little more conservative in how we upped our benchmarks with what we're looking for goal-wise. So you'll see on our dashboard, I think we jumped to sixty-eight percent proficiency that we were looking at for next year on Forward and then keeping with the twenty-one in, in the ACT. But again, it's, I think time will tell. The other good piece, part of this, like I mentioned, is this is one piece of data that we look at. We also have our benchmark, our district screeners, our, our unit assessments, our, our internal data that we use to compare as well. So this is one piece of, of that bigger picture, but it's a significant one. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one specifically for like the breakdowns by race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status. Do we have any data from our peers to compare to? Because it's, when I look at those numbers, I'm like, some of them feel shockingly low. And I'm just curious if we have anything to sort of level set.
We can, there is more variation with each of those individual subgroups based on your district. So where you notice, like, we had one year where we had a Latino subgroup, and I think it was the ACT and we didn't the year before, then it becomes hard to find a district that has a similar, because so much of it has to do with cell size. But we could, we could do some digging in to get some close proximities.
Even like economically disadvantaged, I would imagine is free and reduced.
That would be consistent or relatively consistent.
Yeah. It's just always hard to see those numbers and like, I don't always know how to feel about them aside from sad.
Yeah, I can piggyback off that question. I would agree that some of those numbers are shocking. I appreciate that it was broken down in those categories. I think that gives us a really in-depth view of kind of where those pain points are as far as, you know, how, how we're able to serve our students. I see a lot in the steps for improvement around like the academic aspect of it. I see not as much as far as language around what engaging in the diversity, equity, and inclusion work looks like. And that might not even be a question just for you, Kim. It might be a question for a district administration around like, what preliminary steps do we have? Because I, I heard you mention kind of like a very clear action point of like, we're going to help make sure that our instruction style is more inclusive. Is there any like movement towards? Now, I used to be on the DEI committee, I'm not this time around.
Funny you should say that.
Yeah. Maybe there is conversations going on that I just don't.
There is, and there's a strategic plan with that that will be coming later.
Awesome. Then I will save that.
Yeah, actually, we had a, I don't, I'll let Lindsay share about our DEI committee meeting. We had a meeting this evening and we will be bringing a long-range plan to our next board meeting.
I kind of have another question that's a little bit off of the, like marginalized breakdowns. Is there ever any, because I know with some of our test scores, if you like score at a certain level, it triggers some like other action. At what, like intervention of some kind from, I'm, I know that it's probably not this one, but I mean, to what level do we like take this with a grain of salt? Or do we take this as like, this is law? How do we balance? In your opinion, or also just like in the state's estimation of?
No, that's a great question. It's, it's all in balance. This is one data point from one snippet in time last spring. So when we, when we look at making those decisions in terms of who needs extra support or scaffolding, or maybe who needs enrichment on the other side as well, we have to look at that bigger body of evidence. And so we weigh in like classroom performance and, and, and this is quite dated by this point, right? This was last spring. So this probably wouldn't waste, it's looking at those data trends over time, which is really important to tell part of that data story, but it's not the whole story. The, the big piece for us though, is the most public-facing piece for us and directly is linked to this school report card, which is what I'll be sharing next time.
Awesome. Thank you.
I like to hope that, I like to think that this new realignment with these new standards and proficiency numbers is actually more realistic to what's going on than it was before. And, because it's always bothered me that we're this high achieving district with top report card scores and then we say.
Fifty percent of our students.
Are proficient.
Yes.
You know that our teachers are teaching well and our students are achieving well and that just never sounded well, good to me.
Yes.
So I feel, I'm hopeful anyway, that this is more realistic to what our, you know, what the achievement really is.
I hope so. This one feels better. I, I need to see it play out over time.
Right. I agree.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight point four. We will now have a presentation on the boundary realignment study and recommendations. This item will appear on the November 25th consent agenda.
Good evening. So tonight, I'm here to share about some work that we've been working on internally in our district since really January of 2024. And in front of you, you can see our list of committee members that have been a part of this work, putting many hours and of time and thought into what we're going to present to you this evening. And also with me here sitting at the table, we have Andrea Galke, who is our Assistant Director of Transportation, that did a lot of the work with our software system and looking at analysis and bringing us different maps to look at and so forth. And then Jill Mason, part of our Student Services Department, that has been very involved with our placements and boundary waivers and so on from all of our past practice. And when you look at our committee list there, you can see it was very important to also include all of our elementary principals within, when we're looking at elementary boundary realignment due to just, they know our families and students best and just to be a part of the conversation and so forth. So I just wanted to start by thanking all of them for all their time and efforts. So really over several meetings and then starting with the whole group in March, we reviewed the current boundaries and demographic areas to identify issues such as overcrowding, under enrollment, demographic imbalances, and transportation challenges that we've have in the district. And then what we did is we developed parameters to really help us determine where our boundary shifts should occur. And then after much review and looking at many different data modelings, we are coming tonight with a proposal of some new boundary alignments. The one thing I want you to know is the committee definitely recognizes that anytime you do a boundary realignment with schools, it's not easy and it's something that, it's difficult for any student and family. So we really try to do our best to do this with the least amount of impact to our families and students and provide, Jill will share about some strategies that we'll have and also just doing it now instead of waiting too long into the future. So with that, you know, why? Why do we have to do this? Here is a map. So the last time that we had a boundary change was when we had Prairie View was built and that was in 2008, when this boundary change occurred. And so this is kind of an overview of where you see all the purple or blueish-purple circles. Those are all new developments since the last boundary changes occurred. And then you can see there's two green bubbles. One of the green ones closer to Highway 53 there, that is just south of Prairie View and that is actually a new development that will, the infrastructure will start this summer and there's going to be 250 units going up over the next few years of housing. And then also the other green bubble is just north of Evergreen, where there'll be additional 300 units there. And that has already started some, but will continue over the next years. So with anticipated growth in the northern regions of Holman, the disparity of school enrollment will continue to escalate. While there's, like I said, no perfect time for boundary realignment, continuing to delay the realignment will only increase the number of families that would be impacted by a change. This here, this chart displays, in the first column there, it says actual 2024, 25 enrollment. That is our current third Friday count. So as of September 20th of 2024, that is the number of students that are currently in kindergarten through fifth grade, attending each of those schools. And then to the right, with our proposed realignment, that would be the projected number of K-5 students that would be attending each of those schools. So as you can see in looking at that, currently we have approximately 100 more students in Prairie View than our other elementaries. And when you just currently saw our map, that's where the projected future growth is also showing to happen. So how do we go about our work? Like I mentioned, our first task as a committee was to come up with parameters to guide our work in determining like how should these boundaries be shifted? The first parameters that was considered was redistribution and balancing. So this will ensure that each school has the appropriate number of students for effective program delivery while considering future growth. The second parameter was transportation with a focus on proximity of the household to the school and also taking into consideration ride times. So we really want to try and reduce how long students are on buses. So these parameters really aim to create balanced, efficient, and educationally effective boundaries while considering community representation, transportation logistics, and long-term stability. Now the impact. So the chart on the left is the estimated number of families that would be impacted and these would be families that are currently attending these schools. So for example, there would be 36 families that are currently attending Evergreen that we would, that would fall into a different elementary school boundary. And then Prairie View, there's 35. Sand Lake, there happens to be none. And reason being is when you think about the growth is to the north, we're going to show a short video here and what it is is we're shifting a lot of the boundaries south to the schools to provide room to the north. So, uh-oh. Maybe we won't be showing the video. Oh geez. I don't know what happened. Here we go. Just took me a minute. We're getting there. So this is our current boundary by school, an overview. We'll get into details, but here's the overview. And then you'll see how the map shifts with the proposed changes. Excuse me. Okay, now our next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Jill Mason and she's going to talk about one of our strategies.
Okay, so one of our strategies, which we currently use right now, is family members can apply through a district waiver. They apply for that if they're moving or if they want. They apply for that if they're moving or if they want to attend an elementary school outside of their boundary area. So usually when families do that, they send that to us. And then that is good for the rest of the time the student is in elementary school. Oftentimes, this happens at the end of a current school year, so families preparing for the following year. But we do have families that move during the school year. So currently, if families move during the school year, they can submit at any time a boundary waiver, and then we have to look at numbers, which we'll talk about in a second. But parents are responsible for transportation if a boundary waiver is accepted. And then if an IEP team places a student at a certain elementary outside of the boundary area, the district does provide transportation because that's something we do as an IEP team. So when a family submits a request that comes to the district registrar, when we look at current school year requests, we want to make sure that we have, we're always looking at our numbers. And so I'm always a part of that to make sure that when a request comes in, we're not going over our class size guidelines or things like that. But oftentimes during the school year, they're already attending that school. So they're usually already in the numbers at that point. Then if they're applying for the next school year, so for this group of kids, if they're affected families that are within the boundary change, we want to make sure those applications come in by January thirtieth so that we can really start looking at numbers. Because then we also have open enrollment after that. So we want to make sure that our resident families have the chance to, like, if you have a fifth grader next year and you want the fifth grader to stay at a certain school, we would want to make sure we're taking into consideration those families that are affected by the boundary change before we accept open enrollments to our schools. And so then the criteria, we look at, you know, for families, we look at our specific services required for those students. We want to make sure there's space availability. So if we're already over in third grade at Evergreen, we want to make sure that we're not accepting more kids than we should have in a class. So sometimes we'll even put students on a waiting list and we'll work with families through August sometimes, just depends on how many kids we have coming and going. But we just want to make sure we have that option available for our families, again, that are impacted by boundaries, but in general. Then decisions are based on individual children. So we can't guarantee that if you have a fifth grader and a third grader, that both will be able to attend. We'd love to do that. I think for us, it's a struggle because sometimes you have a fifth grader and that fits, but the third grader sends your numbers up. And so that wouldn't, that wouldn't work with our class size guidelines, so. And then always, you know, we do take into consideration if, if there's more applicants than space, we do want to make sure we're looking at considering sibling placements, prior attendance, and then childcare needs. And then in this process, especially for the current boundary change, all of our current boundary waivers will continue to be honored, so that won't change at this point.
Okay, now we're going to have Andrea share of where, like, in more detail where these proposals were making for boundary shifts. And one thing I wanted to preface with this is, we just know, you know, it's important and we really took into consideration more of a neighborhood look. So, because in that way, we're hoping, you know, kids would be, have some relations with, in friendships with other kids in the neighborhood, where they then wouldn't be like a single person moving to a school on their own. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andrea.
I'm going to do my best to explain where these things are on the map. We look at maps all day, so I could look at these maps and tell, and I know exactly where this is, but I know people who don't look at maps all day may not have a really good understanding. So I'll do my best. So, right now, the Evergreen boundary on this map is kind of that little pink jagged line up on County T. So County T is almost the furthest north our district goes. So it is just south of the river there and to the east. So this is just about as far north as we go, and it's as far east as we go on the north side. So right now, the Evergreen boundary is that kind of pink jagged line. On the left, it's yellow, and then it's kind of just, kind of a pinkish color on the right. Right now, that pinkish color is Evergreen. So we are proposing that County T goes entirely to Prairie View, and then Evergreen would remain south of that line. So we would still have the kiddos that live kind of east, but not quite as far north. That would go to Evergreen, and then Prairie View would be the entire northern boundary.
You will use your mouse at all and draw, and when you're saying these things?
Fantastic, okay. So here's our Evergreen boundary right now. This is the current boundary. There's a little road here called Moen Road. And that is where Evergreen and Prairie View split off. So this is all Prairie View, this is all Evergreen. So we're proposing that this whole northern section here, this would all become Prairie View. And then south of that, this would be Evergreen. So it would just basically be this little chunk in here that would become Prairie View boundary.
And everything north, right? Because on like the bigger map, there's more.
Yes, like over here, this is Harum Road, this is where the Boy Scout camp is on Council Bay. Okay, this is in town. In town right now is kind of a hodgepodge. My understanding is a lot of these developments weren't here when the boundaries were first created. And so they were kind of slammed together. There are some areas that we have kids in multiple schools that attend. We call them gray zones. So it's, it's a little bit difficult to comprehend, so I'm going to do my best, okay? So this road right here is kind of our anchor point. This is Briggs Road. Okay? Briggs Road, and this is Angel Court, there are the really big apartment buildings over here. That is all Prairie View right now. On this side of Briggs Road, so up here, this is Starlight, Monarch, some of the neighborhoods in here, this is Evergreen. And then right now, most of Remington is Evergreen. Viking has Kingsfield Estates, which is the trailer court here. And then they've got just a little corner of Remington. It's the newest part that they're currently still building, Crockett, Bridger, Boone, kind of in there. So that's the current boundary. Our gray zone is kind of right in here. We've got kids from both Evergreen and Viking here. So we are proposing to simplify it. Viking would still be Kingsfield Estates. And then everything east of Marlin in Remington Hills, that would all be Viking. And then everything west of Marlin would be Evergreen. And that would include Briggs and the apartment buildings on Angel Court.
What is the red rectangle?
The red rectangle is, it's for transportation purposes. We can't put a bus in there because that road doesn't actually exist yet. Like, it shows up on the map, but we can't actually traverse it.
That's true, yeah.
That's what that is.
Are we saving questions till the end or going map by map?
I'm comfortable going map by map, especially because, again, like, I don't know how familiar you are with what I'm talking about.
So one question that I can foresee myself being asked is, why split Remington? And have, you know, the chunk that's going to not go to Viking, essentially? Is it because there's so many kids?
Yes, yep, it all comes down to numbers, yep.
A very high-density area of our students. In an ideal world, we would be able to have all of those students go to one school, but that school would be twice the size then, so.
We did play around with trying to find those numbers elsewhere, but it made the map look very inefficient and a little scary. So we went with the very easy one. Okay. So this is, this is McHugh right here. So we're, we're over here, the district office in the upper right-hand corner. So this is McHugh. Right now, we have another gray zone here. This is, it's called Sand Prairie Court. It's right by the town of Holland. We have kiddos in there who are going to both Viking and to Prairie View. And then coming down double X here, right now, this is all Viking territory. So we would propose that we would move both Sand Prairie Court and double X down to Briggs Road to Evergreen. So this is, this little dashed line is right where Briggs is. And again, this is going to be where we're sitting right here at the district office. Right now, everything north of McHugh here, and then down to this really hard-to-see kind of pink line, right now, this is all Prairie View. We would propose all of that would become Evergreen's boundary. And then we're going back to double X. So again, here's Briggs Road. Here's double X. Right now, this is Viking territory. It extends to, this is the first northern OT. There's two OT roads. This is the northernmost one, just on the other side of the exchange here. So right now, this is all Viking. We would propose that would go to Sand Lake. Okay, that's the end of our map. So questions about any of the maps or clarification you need?
Any more questions?
I, I have a question. It's kind of like, a question that I feel like might come up, and I just want to give you the opportunity while we're sitting here to speak to it. There's like this, I think the part that I'm squinting at the most is this like little bit where it's like Evergreen-Viking, and they kind of like spiral in on each other. I think it's probably the spot by like Remington Hills. I trust that the committee was like very diligent in all of their work there. And it's just, I think maybe the curiosity of like, was, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but like, was that the most efficient use from your perspective as Transportation Director? Was that the most efficient use of the, the map where it kind of spirals? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Is it this map that you're talking about?
Yeah, I think it would end up, trying to figure out what that looks like.
Yeah, we tried to take, because our goal was to reduce the number of students attending Prairie View. So we tried to move the Prairie View students elsewhere. And so we tried having Evergreen go up into Country Estates. We tried, instead of doing north-south lines here, we tried doing east-west lines. But again, that would impact more families than what this is currently impacting. So we were trying to really balance the number of students in each school with the impacted families, but also make it look very efficient. So we didn't just have lots on the map like we currently have.
Thank you for explaining that. That really helps.
So to confirm, this version does improve bus efficiencies?
Yes, yep.
Is it like significant? Do we know, like, by a lot, by a little?
Yes, so like I can share, in case you weren't aware, the number of students we have enrolled in rural areas is declining very sharply. Most of the transportation we're sending out there right now are for middle school and high school kids. We just don't have a lot of younger kids in those areas. So right now, we are sending two buses all the way up to that far northeast corner for Evergreen for about eight kids. And that is not an efficient use of our resources.
I have a couple others too. I don't want to hog the mic. Would any of the families of those like thirty-something that are listed there, like just being sensitive to the amount of change that we're talking about, would any of those families then be also looking at, I know we've had past discussions about busing boundaries and where there might be like cutoffs where parents would have to transport, would any families sort of be duly impacted where they might, they might be in a new boundary and look, and see a potential to have their busing change? Does that make sense?
With the walking boundaries or?
Yes, like where we had those boundaries.
One-mile and two-mile boundary discussions we've had.
Where, where we said like, these folks are considered close enough to walk, so we're not going to bus them. If we are making these adjustments, then are any of these families falling into one of those bubbles?
No.
Okay.
No. Most of these fall outside of what we would consider to be safe for students to walk or legally, we can't ask them to walk. They're just too far.
Okay, and then if families, I think, I think you said this at the beginning. So if a family stays at their current school, they apply, they get the waiver, those families are now doing their own transportation for those students, so that's the big kicker, okay?
An alternative would be if they can get themselves to a transportation area for that school, then we would continue to provide transportation, but they'd have to get themselves there. So that might mean, you know, so like in this example, we have this, this group right here between the dark dotted line and the blue line. These kiddos are currently Evergreen. If they want to continue to go to Evergreen, they would have to provide transportation. Or they could come over a couple of blocks into where we would provide busing to them.
Sure, that's helpful. And then my last one was just, can you remind me what the plan for preschools are? And like, I'm assuming that was factored in, but.
Well, it's a, really a separate conversation because that was, a lot of the discussion was that we had when we were talking about our plans with our remodels of our elementary schools and so on. But in hindsight, the, what we would strive for as a district is to have our students in a homeschool as soon as we are able to have that. So really looking at that, moving to four K five elementary schools as, up, doing that as soon as we are able to. And our goal is to bring more information on that to the board this next month and that, around that.
Thank you.
The longer they're able to build relationships and get to know their school and possibly ride, you know, have familiarity with staff and so on, so.
Was there still more to your presentation after the maps?
Yes, one more slide. Sorry, I thought we were, no, that's okay. Just some next steps. So really, so right now, there's, as we do as a board, we presented our information this evening. And then we would bring this to the school board for potential approval on November twenty-fifth. And that, that gives time for us to hear any comments or have any discussion. And then, following school board approval, whenever that approval would occur, we would then notify our staff of the boundary approval on maps. And then also with our families, we would email all families the information. But I think the important thing is, is we would communicate separately with affected families and let them know about exact, so they would know exactly if they were affected in the options that they would have, so. Right, any other questions?
Any other questions?
I think we all recognize the weight of this and how heavy it's going to be and gut-wrenching for a lot of families. So can you just re-explain why this couldn't? You know, there's developments coming, but why this couldn't be a, once you're, hey, your kid's in third grade and get a second grader and a third grader, once they get out, make this a five-year plan so that they can finish their elementary school? Why can't this be a five- Why can't this be a five-year plan so people could finish the elementary school that they're in?
Right, so, a lot of that comes down to our class sizes and our guidelines around that. Um, so, we're still allowing that opportunity, granted, the transportation is something that the families would have to provide. We, in some cases, we would have to hire more staff, and we don't have the funds to hire more staff. If we were to keep, like, say, okay, everyone can stay and then just, cuz if we're adding students and those students attend, and all the students that are there stay there, we would have to add more staff to that building while still staffing our other buildings just because of the class sizes that would remain in other buildings.
And remind me what class size you guys were aiming for again?
Well, it varies at grade levels. In that. We've done some preliminary work in that, and I would say, um, with the impacted families, it, we're looking at, you know, those that would put in for their, um, applications and stuff, we'll do our best to meet the needs of these families as best as we can in that. We're really, we really try to have the minimal amount of impact now, cuz if we wait down the road a couple of years, it would be many more families, um, cuz we would have to for sure do something, so we're trying to minimize that impact now. Like I said, there's never a perfect time, um, and we'll do our best to work through this with, um, each of the families.
Again, other families that maybe aren't impacted but say, oh, I, I wouldn't mind my kids to go to that school, and then that could open up a spot for someone else. Swap, they still have the right to put in an application, say.
Yep, any and all families have the right to do that.
Thanks. All right, thank you all, and the rest of the committee members?
Can I make one more comment? Just, I, um, I know it was a lot of work, and thank you. And also for all of the questions and that it, it is a big change, my family's in one of the affected areas. Um, it's also one where folks definitely scratch their heads and say, like, why are we this school? So I think the community does see that, like, the current maps are not necessarily efficient, they don't make a lot of logical sense, so thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, for the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. Motion by Chris?
Second.
Kadija?
Second by Kadija, is there any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or community reports you have, and tonight, we'll start with Barb.
Um, just, you know, a lot of work went into what has been presented tonight, so I would just like to say thank you to our staff and our administration for all the work that you've been putting into these, um, reports. And also just National School Psychologists Week, thank you to our staff for all the work that they put in to our kids because, you know, that's not very many psychologists for a district this size, so, thank you.
Okay, Keven?
I want to say, I hope everyone's having a great Veterans Day. Um, and today we had an assembly at school to honor them for their service, and I just wanna, you know, honor them cuz they are incredible. And then I also want to, uh, honor the choir for practicing and singing, the band for playing, and also Shania Gates for playing taps, as well as winter sports are coming up, like wrestling, it's a big thing at our school, as well as the blood drive which happened last week. I wanna thank student council, uh, the American Red Cross, and to everyone who donated or tried to.
Okay, thank you, Kadija.
Yeah, I will, um, second of what has already been said. Um, thank you to all of the veterans for their service, and I appreciate, uh, that we had a moment at the beginning of our meeting to recognize them. I think that's incredibly important, and then, the, you know, this pace of life, sometimes we can forget to take that moment and, um, thank those who serve our country. Uh, otherwise, thank you to all the folks who prepared amazing reports tonight. Thank you to the folks who hung in there with us, because that was a, a heavy, um, content meeting, but, um, it is really cool to see kind of all the different ways that our staff are working in our district, it's pretty awesome, so thank you guys.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Yeah, a lot of important work was discussed tonight, so thank you to those who prepared that work. I know there's a lot that goes into that, and I just wanted to, uh, thank those teachers that presented the new class offerings. That's, it's refreshing as a parent in the district to know that our, we have staff looking forward to offering classes that are, have real implications for students and that they can apply their learnings and take it with them as they leave, so, uh, thanks.
Okay, Lindsay?
Yeah, again, thank you to all the veterans in our schools and in our community. Tonight, we met with the DEI Committee, we reviewed the long-range plan, which is really exciting to see it kind of all come together, pretty much almost final. And, uh, with that has kind of our metrics and our timelines and, and who's gonna be involved with each of those initiatives. And the, the time range is a longer chunk of time, but it's, you know, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine, but there are a lot of really great things that are gonna be done in that time, and a lot of work, a lot of issues that are gonna take a heavy focus from staff and community members, and, and so, and they, they follow the dashboard, so there's goals under student learning, fiscal, workforce, community engagement, and health and safety, so, uh, like was said, the November twenty-fifth meeting, we'll get to kind of review that, and then December meeting for approval, so it'll be fun to have everybody take a look at that. And then also, kind of second what everybody said, the presentations were really well-done by the, all the teachers and everybody else that put in all the work for all these presentations and data, so, thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks, Maggie?
Um, I will agree with all the gratitude already mentioned. Um, also mention that the wellness policy met on November sixth. We are currently walking through our most recent triennial assessment, um, and then looking at how that compares to our current policy and seeing where we can make changes to address, um, any of the gaps or the lower scores. Um, and then, I missed the last board meeting, so this was a few weeks ago now, but I haven't had a chance to say it, but I wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Mueller for being recognized as a distinguished guest of honor at the, uh, La Crosse Area Chamber of Commerce's Women's Leadership Summit, so, it was great.
All right. Um, so today, I had the opportunity to provide the welcome address at both, uh, Home and Middle School and Prairie View Veteran Day assemblies. Um, and I just talked a little bit about the history of Veterans Day and what it is, and what we can do to show our appreciation to veterans. So thank you to all the veterans or current service members that are out there. Um, and then I also would like to thank, um, everybody for preparing their presentations today, um, and, and the Boundary Committee, um, in particular for all your, all, all the thoughtfulness that has gone into that effort, cuz I know it's taken a long time to get to where we are, so. Appreciate that. Um, all right, moving on to item ten point three, the board meeting schedule. On November twenty-fifth, we have a Finance Committee meeting at 5:00 PM, followed by a Board meeting at 7:00 PM. On December fourth, we have a Policy Committee meeting at 5:00 PM. On December ninth, we have a Board meeting at 7:00 PM. And then our first meeting in January is on the thirteenth at 7:00 PM, and then our State Education Convention in Milwaukee takes place January twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
This has moved.
Second.
Barbara's second, to adjourn the meeting at 8:59 PM. Motion carried, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.